I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we come together as the Fannie County Commission, we ask you to be with us today, guide us in our decisions for the benefit of our citizens of Fannie County. We also ask you, Lord, to bless our athletes that are competing in the Olympics this year. Bless their hard work and grant them safe trips home to their families. Father, also, we remind you how terribly dry our region is, and we ask your blessings on life-giving moisture for the whole region. And all these things we ask, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Chair comments this morning. I'm glad we have participants here for today's agenda. We'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow is Voters' Day, and you can advance vote today. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, until noon.
Until noon. So for all those who are watching or here gathered, let's get out and get the vote out. It lets your voice be heard. We said that pledge to this flag of this country, it doesn't work without voter participation. Do your part, please, and get out and vote. We have some really wonderful things happening in our community, and we'll try to address a few of those things on our business agenda today. Vice Chairman Jones, do you have a motion with regard to the agenda?
Yes, we need to amend the agenda. You made a motion for the agenda.
Yes. I believe the Administrator and County Counselor want to talk about the Western Kansas Quarter and acceptance of improvements.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to amend the agenda to add Western Kansas Quarter, Acceptance of Improvements, to the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll abstain. We have a consent agenda. Commissioners?
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This morning, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission during public comment? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the business agenda, and the business items are as published. This morning, we'll hear from all the people involved in the EMS Health Department update. Where would you like to begin, Mr. Administrator?
This morning, so if she would like to begin, I believe she has a presentation there for you.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Please tell all the viewing audience who you are.
Absolutely. I'm Sydney Goldberg. I represent Goldberg Group Architects, and we've had the pleasure of getting to work with Fannie County on the Health Department and EMS facility. So we've concluded schematic design and kind of a conceptual exterior. We wanted to, per Lon's suggestion, present that to the commission, you know, for full approval. We've had a really wonderful collaboration with the county, so we're excited to be here today. All right, we'll jump in. Do you want to introduce yourself, Andy? I'm also joined by Andy from Hutton Construction.
Yep. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Andy Farmire with Hutton. We're the construction management firm that you all have selected for the project, so we've worked with Goldberg to date, the floor plan you're going to see today. We've done a preliminary budget on, tried to get fairly detailed with it, and that'll be part of what we discuss today.
Awesome. And attached to the agenda, you all should have copies of the floor plan, just because I know the slides can, it's a lot of information to take in. We'll run through a brief discussion of the floor plan, the budget as it stands, the schedule, and then we have some exterior renderings and a video to show that, we, you know, hope it gets the public excited about the project as well. It's really, as you said, Chairman, there are a lot of exciting things happening in the community. All right, on to the floor plan. So first, just an overview of the site. Do you want to talk about the site a little bit, Andy? It sits on Eighth and Mary?
Yep. It's a, project site is, as you know, is the southwest corner of Eighth and Mary. It's essentially a greenfield site, as of today.
Yeah, and it's extremely flat. We've had survey work done, some utility work. We're going to look at the floor plan in more detail, but this is an overview of the different kind of sections of the video, or, excuse me, building. The darker gray areas are the Health Department functions. The lighter gray areas are the EMS functions, and then the tan is that, the public spaces, primarily for the Health Department. All right, you got to feel for, the ambulance bays will be in the lower corner of the site. They'll exit onto Eighth Street, which we felt gave them a little more flexibility to be responsive in the case of an emergency. If we could go on to the next slide. Perfect. So this is the Health Department side, primarily the office and clinic portions. Our goal in designing this, I mean, we've had a really extensive collaboration with stakeholders from the county across the board. Elected officials, the Health Department, Robert and Jenny have been, you know, wonderful to work with. So our goal is to provide the county with as much flexibility as possible, right? There are labels on here representing kind of the intended use in the near future when the building's constructed, but we want the county to be able to evolve, you know, and have the space to do so. So that conference space can flip for public access, for kind of community events. It can be used for things like staff working, workouts, staff training, cooking classes, which are, the Health Department does sometimes for nutrition and health. Moving over to the right, more of the clinic and exam portion. Lot of larger exam rooms. It's very common for the Health Department to have families coming in, and they really don't have space for that. All right, we'll go on to the next slide. Here's the public lobby, and then the WIC portion. The WIC portion, in their current setups on the lower level, there's some accessibility problems and just, you know, public access is a little limited there, very limited on space, so they're excited to have offices to meet with their clients and clients' children to really talk through the services and needs that they have. All right, we can go on to the Health Department portion, or, excuse me, the EMS portion. Now EMS is obviously so important, Emergency Medical Services, and a little bit unique setup because they have staff onsite 24/7. So EMS includes more limited office space, a report room for after runs, but a lot of it's that, those living quarters, and then they need space for decontamination after a run, space to clean their ambulances out, decontaminate those, so the ambulance bay will have a floor drain and ventilation that lets that happen. All right, just ran through a lot of information very quickly. What questions can I answer on those floor plans?
Commissioners?
You can put, what, four ambulances? You're stacking two on each side?
Yes, you can. There is also space, we discussed expansion in a few different areas, but for the ambulance bay specifically, you could add a third bay on, the site allows it. Skylar, as the EMS Director, thought it was probably more likely another station would be added, but we wanted to be sure we gave, again, that flexibility.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I might point out that Lon and I attended a lot of these meetings, and this is probably about the eighth or ninth rendering of this floor plan. A lot of input, a lot of very good discussion. So I appreciate you guys working with staff as long as you did to get to where everybody's happy.
Absolutely, and it's, again, it's really been a pleasure to do so. Dwayne, Lon, we had Dave at an early meeting. Everyone from the Health Department, everyone from EMS has just been wonderful to work with, really thinking about using project dollars responsibly, maximizing, you know, what the county has. So, again, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Not a question, but a comment. I, the first part of the comment I've said before, a lot of attention was given to workflow and traffic through the building from the, from the people coming in, public coming in, but also the workers. And one of the things that's on the screen right now, when we first looked at this, there were no windows in those rooms for the EMS people, and we said, "We need windows in there because mental health is a piece of what we're trying to address with this facility as well." So I appreciate all the flexibility that Goldberg has provided us.
Thank you.
I have one comment.
Yeah.
Instructively, the entrance way, what I believe is to the Health Department, is covered. And I'm an old snow removal guy. That's got a tight turn for any type of equipment to get snow removed from underneath there. And to my commissioners, is it possible to reduce the island size around the overhang so that we don't have such a tight area for cars to advance? And less area for snow to block that entrance?
That's a great thought, Commissioner. Yeah, we can absolutely make that adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, you might also address, though, and maybe we need to go back a slide, or maybe it's on your exterior, but there's, there's two entrances off of Mary, and one of them is for the vaccines and people coming in. The other is the main entrance, which we actually asked them to move the door from the north to the west side of that, best to be able. So we might, when we go to the exterior, we might talk about what entrances is what.
Yeah, absolutely. I, yeah, I think that's a great point, Commissioner, and I think we will absolutely take a look at that. What Lon is referring to is, and I should have referenced this in the floor plans just so you all had this background, that's the Community Outreach Drive-Thru, which is used for drive-through testing, drive-through vaccinations, if possible, and then lunch distribution during the summer. So I, yeah, we will absolutely take a look, though, at what snow removal would do there, because maintainability is huge for the county. So, yeah, we'll, we'll maybe revisit that when we get to the exterior renderings.
And also, my 10 cents worth is, is that the height of the overhang needs to allow for our buses to be able to get underneath it
Yeah.
for the delivery of elderly and others who don't have their own transport.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I hope that we get a lot of snow as moisture to this area, and when we get it, we seem to get it in bunches, and that looks like a maintenance area problem.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Speaking of buses, the present-day Health Department is a city-linked bus stop. And there'll be no need for that once that building is vacated. Is there a place at this site to move that bus stop?
Yes, and I also, thank you, Commissioner. That's a great question. Our goal is to work with the city and county on moving that bus stop, because I completely agree, and that public transit access is key for, I mean, really, any public department, so I appreciate that. That site plan is still pretty preliminary. We also, due to the size and flatness of the site, other qualities that my engineers will comment on, we're also looking at a detention basin in the lower-left corner, and so that isn't reflected on the site either. Yes, absolutely, though, a bus stop will be very important.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Sydney, Ms. Goldberg?
I'm sure they've addressed this, but my question comes to HVAC. What type of system are you guys proposing for this building? We've had, we're having such problems with that in all our buildings.
Yes, I'm going to ask Andy to come up for this one.
So we've, right now, I think we've been budgeting this off of a package rooftop type of units. And as we've gotten through this budget so far, we, and we'll get to the slide where we kind of talk about budget, but we did take a really deep dive into talking with Goldberg, both Sydney and Kevin, ensuring that as we put this first budget together, we were looking at not just overall building cost per square foot models, but cubi, cost per cubi guards for concrete, you know, cost per square foot for different types of flooring, HVAC systems being one of them. I think where we're at right now, we're in a, in a range where something of a sort of packaged gas-fired, packaged rooftop unit system, use of multiple units throughout the building is, is where, where we've got a mechanical budget set for right now.
Yeah, we, we hear you all, though, on the, just the frustration of making an investment that hasn't panned out how you all wanted. We, we're familiar with that. We've also been working with Kyle, your Director of Maintenance, just talking with him about what maintenance he prefers, what, you know, has been easy for him to manage. So, yeah, I appreciate your question, Commissioner.
Be repaired by local people.
Absolutely. Yes.
Also, there's a term we do not like to hear, and that's called "state-of-the-art",
Yeah.
We've had problems.
Untested. Great questions. Yeah, thank you all. And this isn't by any means the end of questions. I mean, this is a look at the schematic plans as they stand, and we're hoping to enter construction documents. We're always available to answer these questions, though.
Very good. Mr. Administrator, do we have any formal action that we need to take on this floor plan?
If you don't mind, we'll go ahead and let them conclude. They're not, not, their demonstration, or their presentation.
Anything else in my package?
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'll let Andy take over. We're going to talk a little bit about budget.
Sure.
Do we have a slide for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so as I mentioned just a moment ago, working off a floor plan very similar to the one that's being presented to you today, we developed a construct, a preliminary construction budget. This is, we, we see the construction right now as at about 12, 12 million, or 12.3 million dollars. With, on top of that is an overall project cost, we see it at between 13.5 and 13.6. So that includes design engineering fees, furniture, fixture, equipment, those sorts of things, all the soft costs that go into that. That budget includes site work, site development as well. We, we presented a budget to the, to the committee back in June, based off of that, and had a really good dialogue about some of the floor plan changes and modifications. Goldberg has since updated, and the plan you see today is the kind of final product coming out of that meeting from June. And I will commend Goldberg. They've done a really nice job of making those changes that were discussed in June, and keeping that square footage pretty much exactly where it was before. So they did a really nice job of making those modifications and in keeping us within that same guardrails that we set for the budget. So as we move forward, we talk about schedule and timeline. Sydney talked about, after today, moving forward into construction documents. So there, that, as we move into that process, there, you'll start, I'm kind of speaking out of my lane here, but you'll start engaging your engineers and getting more, more detailed with design. When they hit about the 50% complete mark with design, and they have a preliminary set of mechanical, electrical plumbing drawings, we're going to do another deep dive budget. So we're going to, we're going to kind of hit the pause button on design for a couple of weeks. That'll give us time to, to develop a new budget. At that point, we're also going to engage some, some local trade partners and get some budget feedback from at the subcontractor level, and do some budget verifications there. And then we'll have a check-in with the committee and, and ensure that we're staying on the right path. Overall, we're targeting drawings to be complete by the end of November. Yeah, that's going to allow us the opportunity to bid this project out over the month of December and into the beginning of January, which is really going to set us up well to be able to start doing groundbreaking in March. So really, March of 2025 is our target for commencing construction onsite. And with that, we see project being complete around September of '26.
Questions for the budget? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
You have outside renditions of it now?
We do, all right. So this is our first public presentation of the exterior. The, the concept will stay, stay true to what it is. Materials may shift a little bit as we get closer, just based on what's cost-effective, what's available on our timeline, things like that. But again, you know, everything we do is designed to be maintainable, durable. This is a public facility, but still beautiful and reflect, you know, the community that you all have. Okay, we can flip through, yeah, a couple more.
You might address those entrances.
Yeah, let's, we'll pause here. So this is facing Mary Street. I also recognize, just as a side note for the community, we don't have the rest of your community in the background, which I would love to have that change made so we can see it. But, so on the left, we have the, the true main public entry where you enter the building, and then that right overhang is Community Outreach. Now, there will be signage on the site that is not reflected yet. Signage is going to be really important in this project. But, yeah, I think Lon, you wanted me to touch just on the, on the use for that, and then maybe we'll revisit that snow removal concern. I think your point is still well-taken about the radius of it being too tight for a plow, for removal equipment. Okay. I like what you said, though, about just using that for, like, elderly, you know, communities to access the facility or things like that, especially in inclement weather. So this is the rear of the facility, and this is where, you know, we may look at a detention basin. We're still working on that, that final site plan. You've got a covered area on the left for Health Department staff to step outside, have a break. And then the area on the right that's covered and a little more built in, and that, that's not finalized by any means. We'll work with the staff to, you know, finalize what that looks like, but that's for EMS. Again, they're onsite 24/7, 365, and so being able to have an outdoor space will be a nice benefit for, for those team members. All right, and then there's the EMS main entrance. You know, there won't be, we're not anticipating as much public access to the EMS. It's primarily for, like, training events that they host monthly and quarterly, but of course, want to have a distinct entrance that recognizes what they do, because it's essential. And again, there will be some signage out more at sidewalk level, just so pedestrians, the public can, you know, be confident where they're going.
That's facing Eighth Street, right?
Correct, thank you. Yes, this is facing Eighth Street. All right, and then we'll take a little tour. All right, and I think that finally is the end of our presentation. Yeah, we're, again, happy to take any questions you all still have. Go ahead, Dave.
I have a question from the public here that was just texted to me about, could there be some thought given to zero-scaping due to the water shortage potential and so on to do away with part of the, of the exterior lawn water demands?
Yep, absolutely. So that landscaping was all, for example, that's a great question. That we will work very closely with the county, again, to find landscaping that makes sense for your area, for your climate, like you said. Great question. Again, yeah, there were also a lot of trees in the background that, you know, weren't quite there. So I appreciate the question, though, because that, yeah, you would not want to be maintaining a bunch of water-heavy plants over time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Good start. Mr. Administrator, do you have any other comments?
No, no, we just would like to have the commission authorize full architectural design at this point.
And Ms. Chairman, with your permission, I would offer that motion to accept the floor plan as presented and authorize full design with Goldberg Group and Hutton Construction.
Hold a second.
The two commissioners assigned to this building and who have been intricately involved have made the motion to proceed. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. I hope you all have a great day and week.
Next on our business agenda, we have a Highway 83 proposal from South Bend Ranch. Mr. Carlson is here today. Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Fannie County Commission. My name is James Carlson. I'm the owner of the South Bend Ranch Plaid Edition. It's 6505 South Highway 83, and I'm here to follow up on a, Garden City, Kansas, 67846. I'm here to follow up on a request that the commission consider amending an emotion action of July 15. I'll be brief with my comments because they're included in, in the package that was submitted to the commission. Hopefully, you all have that or have seen it. Okay, I'm seeing nods from the commission. Very good. Dory is most excellent at what she does. I need to, I need to get that in there. The, right now, South Bend Ranch enjoys asphalt access, direct asphalt access to US Highway 83, and it's our hope that that service, that community, that service to South Bend Ranch will continue. So, that's, that's the purpose behind the proposal that we're putting before the commission. There's three, three items here that I'm requesting action on. One would be to vacate an east-west corridor section easement that is in Section 19 Township, 25 South Range, 32 West. That easement was part of the original property on Highway 83-1. Now, we're on Highway 83, three, number three, project number three. So, and it's a, it's an, it's an easement that's not currently used. So, that's, that's the first request, piece of the request. The second is, is that South Bend Ranch has a, the Plaid Edition has an, had an approved Kansas PLS surveyor sign plat. It was also signed by the Fannie County Planning Commission and filed with the Register of Deeds on March 10, 2009, and it was never approved by the commission. So, part of that request would be that the commission considered doing that. And then the third, the third piece is really what, what I'm going to talk about just briefly here, and that is consider revision of the Fannie County motion to accept a .568 mile milled and resurfaced asphalt road constructed by Kansas Department of Health and, or Kansas Department of Transportation, excuse me, between Annie Shear Road and the South Bend Ranch Drive apron. That's described in the KDOT agreement and plan and profile drawings. In support of the request, in support of the request, Table 1, what we did is I stopped by KDOT, and I requested an informal cost calculation on, on what it, what it, what the cost is to actually remove, grind out and remove the existing US 83 alignment, grind it, and then replace it as a gravel replacement, and then, and then the cost for just a mill of the existing Highway 83 road that would be dedicated and then replaced with a minimum overlay. And the philosophy behind what you, what you see is a little different, is what I did is I, we looked at the cost from the perspective of the Kansas taxpayer. So, I didn't separate out local government. I considered the cost to Kansas taxpayers as a whole. And, and when you do that, it looks different. I know that local government typically looks at costs based on the impacts to the county. But when you look at this as a cost to a taxpayer as a whole, things look a little different. And so, that's, that's on table, one that's in your packet. I won't go through necessarily the details. We laid them out, and Administrator Reese was kind enough to send me the, some cost information. And the, oh, another thing I need to make a point on is the KDOT cost estimates. They were not aware, they're informal cost estimates. They not, were not aware of my intent to use them for this presentation. So, I stand on my own on those cost estimates. I don't want to implicate them in any way that they, they were, they were a part of what this proposal is. So, I want to make sure and, and do that. But, so, the proposal really comes down to, the, the request is, and again, there's, there's information here and engineering stuff, and suitable enough to make your eyes roll back and, and put some people to sleep. But it's, it's in the proposal. And basically, what, what we're suggesting is that instead of the, the county accepting the alignment, the current 83, current proposal, and then can grind it and put it back to gravel, we're requesting that the county consider requests, taking the, accepting from KDOT, the, a mill, a ground, a milled and replaced asphalt, minimum asphalt surfacing to access South Bend Ranch. That, and, and part of that, part of the justification for that, it's, it's kind of neat, is that right now, the traffic loading to that road, to US 83, and that's based on some of the, some of the estimates that come across for asphalt are, you know, normal loading. And we're going to go, we're going to, the proposal has a thousand percent decrease in traffic loading. So, we go from effectively 6,000 cars a day, which would, that would be what the normal maintenance costs would be required for the county, to about six cars per day. So, that's about a thousand percent decrease in traffic loading. And most of that's my wife's minivan, and, you know, and a few neighbors, and a couple of tractors, and maybe a, you know, Christmas, a partridge in a pear tree. I don't know. But not a lot, not a lot of traffic. And so, that's part of the justification. So, what we're suggesting is that the county provide a, receive the, receive the road alignment. KDOT would shave off the shoulders, and then shave off the shoulders at the end of the US Highway 83 project construction. They would, they would take off the shoulders, and then they would rep, mill and replace the top asphalt layer, and the county would receive and excess, accept that alignment. And then, in return for that, we, South Bend Ranch, would, would accept reduced asphalt maintenance for, that would over, that would defer maintenance for 20 years or longer on that road. And I think that that's a reasonable proposal, not only for the, for the Kansas taxpayer, because it's cost less cost. It allows us to enjoy the services that we currently have, which is access to paved, paved highway, and, and it's, it's cost-effective. So, with that, there's a lot of minutia. I don't necessarily need to get into that, but I'm certainly open for questions and, and comments on that.
Okay, Commissioners? I do have a comment. Mr. Carlson, have you signed your easements with KDOT to begin the process of making sure KDOT has cleaned up everything it needs from you in order to proceed with the overall 83 construction project?
That's a good question, Mr. Chairman. We have not signed in a temporary easement. KDOT's requested a temporary easement, construction easement to, to build the highway, to reconstruct the highway from us, South Bend Ranch. We have not signed that easement. Wheatland Electric has also requested easements. We have not executed those either, and we're certainly willing to, to do that as part of, as part of this project. So, it, it made sense to wait to execute those easements until we understood the, the scope of where this was going.
That's kind of my point, is I think that all of us need to try to find a way to make this project go, and appreciate your, bringing your presentation to us. With regard to the vacating the east-west corridor section easement, my personal view on that is I don't see any reason to do that. Getting your parcel plat approved, was signed and filed with the Register of Deeds, what else is there for the commission to do?
This would probably be a question for the Administrator or your planning department. So, we're getting deeper than my understanding of the process.
Just going down the checklist on what you're asking for.
Yes, sir.
Mackenzie, if you'd like, Mackenzie to go ahead and field that one for you.
All right, why don't we do that?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So, my understanding is that it was signed administratively by the Secretary of the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Caleb Katner, if I recall.
Okay, so, the regulations do allow for a plat to be administratively approved by the Secretary of the Planning Commission if there are no dedications to be made. So, if there were no easements or any road right-of-way dedications, or if it was, there's a certain, other certain minimum standards. So, if this was signed off by the Secretary of the Planning Commission and recorded with the Register of Deeds, then there's no other further action that needs to be taken. It is accepted.
Very good. Thank you. Then, with regard to the, number three, the real issue here is the cost of maintaining a hard-surface road versus receiving from KDOT a gravel road back. Mr. Administrator, what's the difference in cost to the Fannie County taxpayers?
Right now, the Public Works is estimated on an annual basis. The cost for maintaining one mile of gravel road to be approximately $2,500 a mile. If they add product to that, filling holes and, and supplying additional gravel for the road, it could run another $3,000, or about $5,500. As we talked about during the budgeting process, on some of your roads that have a high traffic, those roads over a 10- to 12-year period will cost the county approximately $310,000, or anywhere from about $27,000 to $31,000 per year to maintain. I think, as Mr. Carlson has indicated, that traffic dramatically reduces, which would probably not cause to have a mill and overlay within 15 to 20 years, probably would be the timeframe perhaps for that. Most of it would be just track seal and chip and seal on occasion.
Questions from the Commissioners?
Jim, the, the property on the drawings I'm looking at here, to the south of your house, are those owned by you or who?
Oh, to the, to the south of the south, currently platted South Bend Ranch? They're not owned by me yet.
How about on the east side of 83 now, existing?
We, we own no, we know, we own no, no, no ground on the east side of US 83, nor have we had plans to acquire any land.
But that will be taken when the new highway goes through.
That would probably be a KDOT question.
So, basically, what you're asking us, this, this, to, this half-mile to service just your residents only?
There, there would be, it's, I'm asking you to service South Bend Ranch. I cannot represent for the commission that we would be building to the south. We've talked about it, and we were considering doing that. We're community citizens. We're going to remain in the community, and we're, but to, and, and we'd like to, but my in-laws are aging, and so, we'd like to build there, but we have not formally made any motions toward that direction. So, I cannot represent that.
That's the area you have platted, correct?
Yes. Well, no, no, this, only the six, only the six acres is platted, but we would extend that plat and request, we request that from the planning department. We can't plant other people's property. They, they kind of get, get excited about that.
One of the options that can be pursued is if we would receive the road back from KDOT, request that it be left as a hard surface, and with the other landowners' permission along the way, those landowners on each side of the existing 83 highway abandon that road to you, and you can maintain the road as you see fit. We'd probably reserve the minerals underneath it as far as any transfer of the title.
For a split estate.
Pardon?
That would be a split estate tran, transaction, reserving the minerals. I'd have to consider that. I hadn't considered that option, Mr. Chairman, so I, I don't know what the, what the ramifications would be to us, but it'd certainly be something we'd be interested in talking about.
Looks to me like the total Kansas taxpayer would win. It appears that the cost to future county commissions would be greatly reduced. It wouldn't be a dangling suspension agreement triggering in an event for costs in 20 years, and leave you and your neighbors to agree to abandon that road and you to accept the title to it. Meaning that you get all of the maintenance on it.
Right. We control everything that's required in the county.
I will be fair warning. You might want to talk to the appraiser about the valuation of an asphalt road. Because those roads are very expensive.
And so, so that's a taxable liability that would come over to, to South Bend Ranch?
It would. So, yeah, it has a great burden. It's very efficient, but I would want you to have in mind as a taxpayer, and a well-educated person, to know that you're not going to get a tax bill for a road that you acquired title to that suddenly increases your valuation by a lot. You hard-surface a lot in the town and see the difference between your valuation from a sandlot to concrete, your valuations are going to go way up.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, I probably could make a decision on that right now and say that we probably wouldn't accept that option.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Jim, how many property owners are on both sides of the road or in that half-mile stretch? Two, two others beside yourself?
That sounds correct, but I really don't, I'm really, I, I, I'm speculating. I'm speculating.
As I understand, what you're wanting to do is you want to limit it to the .56 miles rather than the .76 miles that KDOT had indicated, that they were going to abandon back to us, and your request is only down to Annie Shear Road, not to the extended south of Annie Shear Road, according to this drawing. This is the one that I'm looking at.
Sure. Right now, the way the design is, there's a cul-de-sac that occurs in so, partway, right? And so, I think the cul-de-sac would be a discussion we need to have, too. I didn't want, I wasn't prepared to get into the, the details, but I speculate that the cul-de-sac is because they didn't want to enter into the right-of-way alignment and burden the right-of-way alignment for the new 83. That's my speculation for the purpose of the cul-de-sac.
And leave that hard surface in there and then have to take it back later from the state of Kansas's perspective. As we, you know, we, we as a commission won the four-lane yesterday. And it's still in the planning and development phase, but it looks to me like that cul-de-sac keeps you out of the future right-of-way for a four-lane 83.
Yes. But I think the design documents do, too. If I can make one more comment about the easement before you, any...
Yes, sir, you may.
Yes. One of the reasons for vacating the easement is Google Maps, and so, we routinely have semis that are guided by Google Maps that come onto my property and, and saying, hey, wait a minute, it's on my Google Maps here, and there's nothing but weeds. And so, I have semis that are wanting to turn around on, on my land, and, and it's, I mean, that's, that's an easy one to see why that, that's disruptive. So, if that vac, that easement's vacated, then Google Maps, they'll, they'll be removed from the electronic database.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
But it gives me-
I can attest to this problem very well, because it happens all the time right in front of my home.
Right, well, I'm, I'm kind of, most, most of you Commissioners know me, I'm kind of an activist. And so I, I'm able, I think I can probably move Google in that, the right direction on that.
Good luck.
Right, see, there we go, so.
Mr. Carlson, I wanted to afford you the opportunity to address the commission on the reconsideration of the conversion of Old Highway 83 from hard-surfaced gravel. The prior motion was to convert it to gravel and ask for KDOT consideration of that request. We are going to have a, another hearing here with KDOT and Brogan Andrews on the follow-up on US 83 and KDOT. And so unless a Commissioner wants to take any motions or take any action on that reconsideration, we'll move on to the 83-KDOT discussion and keep your thoughts and ideas in mind.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is from KDOT and okay, he doesn't look like Brogan, but good morning, would you please announce yourself for the viewing public?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Ron Hall, the Southwest District Engineer for KDOT, here to be able to field any questions in person. Our primary presentation will be Brogan Andrews and they are going to be online. And I'll turn it over to Brogan at this time.
Good morning, Brogan Andrews, KDOT representative, and here with me, I have Brian Bowman as well. So yeah, thank you to Mr. Carlson. A lot of, a lot of what you said is, is true on our round here, but I kind of get into the details here, speaking for me. Sure. I'm going to share my screen. I know, I believe you guys have the information as well. But just to pull it up and then sort of kind of point to what I'm talking to, but yeah, as we've been discussing, we're going to talk about the US 83 realignment, pavement reconstruction and addition of passing lanes. Specifically, and then we're talking about this, the existing US 83 stretch of highway that will be turned back to Finney County for maintenance. And then we've had this meeting back in early July. So this is just a follow-up based off the discussions that we had there. I will go ahead and get into our current design and proposal for this stretch of 83. So, the entire stretch of existing 83 would be, is designed to be eradicated in some portions, and this was in a discussion with the county engineer back in 2021. We had talked about reducing the shoulders and the roadway down 28 feet, eradicating the portions of existing 83 that wouldn't be necessary for, it's just, just for the landowners and maintaining access. And then without doing any mill and overlay on what is turned back, we would estimate a 15-year lifespan with the reduction of, of traffic and truckload and, you know, the very minimal traffic that would be on, on this roadway. So, this does contradict what Mr. Carlson had brought up. He's saying the current design is to mill an overlay, the existing 83, which is incorrect. Our, our current design is just to remove the shoulders and leave the existing roadway as is. And then we did get any call and kind of threw out that proposal for mill an overlay. And with that, I will kind of get into, so I know this wasn't well-received by the county. You guys have pitched another idea and we're kind of here to pitch another couple of options to counter this one here. Our, our next option would be to mill an overlay. And we would, we would return the entire stretch of existing 83 from Annie Shear to TV Road. And we would provide a mill and overlay, also with the reduced roadway to 28 feet. And we would return this to the county, which would require very little maintenance and provide a lifespan of at least 15-plus years. I'd say in projects, this is typically how we, how we proceed to turn back highway to the county, this is mill an overlay, give them a good, you know, lifespan of the pavement, make it the easiest maintenance as possible, you know, while still accommodating all the parties involved. So this is another option, as well as we do have another final option we are willing to accommodate, which would be to reduce the entire stretch of existing 83 down to 28-foot roadway, just like the other options. As well as, you know, just essentially that being it, and then we provide a lump sum to the county, which would be for the county to maintain, you know, for the the next 15, 20 years, we would give a lump sum of money for that. And so then it would be up to the county to maintain the existing condition of 83. And I know you guys are, you're talking about some numbers for maintenance and we can dive a little deeper into that if you guys have some estimates there, but with, with that being said, you know, with those other two options, we can get into questions if you guys want to, if you guys have any clarification on what we're proposing here or, and any thoughts really.
Commissioners?
Now, you, where, I'm trying to look at what area you're going to abandon on your option two about mill and overlay, is that?
Sure, so would be, with the, with the mill and overlay, we would be, because I, from the last meeting that we had, you guys, you guys were in favor of breaking up existing 83. So with the mill and overlay option, maybe we would do the entire stretch from where we split off of the alignment at this landowner here, all the way to where we come back on the line essentially to Mr. Carlson's property.
So you're talking about the area from TV Road clear up to Mr. Carlson's property, correct?
Yep, yep, we'd be willing to mill that entire stretch and turn that to the county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Lon Patient, and so option three that you've thrown into the mix today would be that stretch that was Commissioner Jones just referenced. But leaving it as asphalt and giving a lump sum payment to the county for maintenance, is that what I'm understanding option three is?
That is correct. And still the same process of removing the shoulders, reducing the roadway. But yeah, no, no action to the pavement, just a lump sum.
Yeah, that, and I did, I do understand that about the shoulders, yeah, thank you.
Correct, yep.
Do you have a lump sum amount yet?
Now, that, that was going to be a follow-up question of mine too, Larry, is how, you, you said using the county's estimates on what that maintenance would be for 15 or 20 years, is that right, Brogan?
Uh, yes, so, so we, we would still need some more internal discussion if that's the way, you know, we want to go. But I think having that estimate for us would help, would, would help that discussion go along.
I'm going to need a spreadsheet with some numbers so I could look at before, this is not a spur-of-the-moment decision, I do not believe.
And, and that's understandable. So with this, it's hard for us to give an estimate, we would need that from the county engineers. The state of Kansas and the rest of the county has different standards for maintaining their roadway. So we really don't have a great way of estimating it. So we would need that from the county engineer.
I would like to give the Administrator some direction in negotiating with the state on how we should accept this area from the area what we previously put in our motion south of Buffalo Dunes. And now we're talking about the area from Mr. Carlson's property to TV Road. Everybody understand our prior motion was to accept gravel back from the state and they're really not wanting to do that, they're wanting to provide additional options of, of keeping hard surface area. And option three includes a payment to the county of an unknown, an unspecified amount that really isn't capable of judgment today.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to vacate that previous motions with the intent of starting all over here?
Well, I think that, I would like to hear from the Administrator on how the best way to proceed to bring the issue to conclusion and keep in mind what deadlines the state may have that we're not aware of as to how soon they need our help in making this project a-go. I don't want to be seen as the impediment to progress on getting the improvements done.
I can just, I can interject real quick and, just, I mean, appreciate the feedback and back and forth. You know, we're just trying to accommodate all parties involved. But we are approaching, you know, the end of the plans here. And then we would request that we have a final decision by the next board meeting. And, you know, in between this time period and in the next two weeks, we'd be happy to, you know, discuss via email, you know, get those numbers lined up, get a better estimate for you guys, if, if that's what we need to do as well.
Thank you, we'll hear from Mr. Hall.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the, some of the reasoning behind not wanting to do the gravel option. We are in the process of negotiation with landowners along the tract. All of that negotiation has been based on the, the current option which provided asphalt access. And we don't want to stop that and restart with a, with a redesigned plan for, as, as you've had the discussion with Mr. Carlson of changing the surfacing type going to those properties. The other thing I wanted to make sure that you're aware of is there will be an abandonment of small pieces at both ends. We won't have, that existing 83 will not connect to the new 83. The, those connections are provided in other ways. Make sure that that's clear.
Very good.
So actually, it's not going all the way to TV Road, you're saying, Ron?
It won't connect to, to the 83 highway.
Oh, right there at the end, okay.
Right.
All right, and then on the north end of it, north of Mr. Carlson's property, that's also going to be completely abandoned.
Right, there will not be a connection from the Carlson property to the highway anymore. That will be down through Annie Shear.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And some of this may be to our Administrator, I'm not exactly sure. But if we were to accept option three, if, if the numbers came in where we could, could accept that, would it not be a future board's prerogative to do something else with that road? Say, say we looked at maintenance for the next 15 years on this and that's the lump sum and we're okay with that lump sum. After that 15-year period, would not a future commission be able to come in and say, we're going to ditch this asphalt and we're going to mill an overlay or go to gravel? Because it has become a county road. Would that latitude not be there sometime in the future?
They would still have that option, that's correct.
All right, well, I think that what we want to do is authorize our Administrator to work with Mr. Brogan and yourself to discover what option two and three and see if there's a recommendation back to the commission. Put it on the agenda for the 19th. Is there anything else that we need to accomplish today with regard to the overlay part of our discussions with KDOT?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going to make a comment that I made on a phone call with Brogan and I don't remember who the others were, Robert was on that phone call. And Ron, this is nothing to you personally or, or anything, but I look at this as another mandate from the state that doesn't come with the funding. But if we can do something with the lump sum option, this option three, maybe something is coming back to the county and there would be some funding attached to it. So that's why that does interest me, because I felt like the other, the other options, we're being handed another stretch of road, another, and I'm going around to five miles and we can't maintain the 230 miles that we have today, which I made in, or made known in a budget presentation of a meeting or two ago. So I just wanted to make it clear that that's what I said during that phone call and I stand with that. But that's why option three does have some, some of my attention.
All right, anything else from the commission? Then we will take this up on the overlay issue and Mr. Carlson's on the 19th. If you can be here, great, Mr. Carlson. Well, if you can, listen in and we'll try to have a more reasoned and more informed discussion with the state as to costs to the county and make a decision at that time. Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
No, we're good.
Mr. Hall or Mr. Brogan? All right, now, don't go anywhere, folks, because we're going to change gears and go to another aspect of this 83 improvement project, which is the pedestrian tunnel. And if we can show the public what we're talking about, that would be of interest to me. The proposed box is in an area north of Burnside Drive. And Mackenzie, you have a presentation you want to make?
Yes.
All right, so here now from Mackenzie, please announce for the viewing public.
Good morning again Chairman and Commissioners, Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, you are asked to consider and approve including a pedestrian tunnel in the US Highway 83 relocation project to provide access for a future community trail. So, this has been a long goal of the communities within Finney County to construct trails to connect, to, to provide for connectivity and active transportation throughout the county. The 2018 Finney County Comprehensive Plan did identify a proposed trail location stretching from Garden City south down Burnside Drive and then connecting to the Southwind subdivision. The Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, has included a box structure as part of the design for this US Highway 83 relocation project to serve as a pedestrian tunnel for the future trail. The original proposal presented by KDOT did include that the state would cover the construction costs, but the county would be responsible for the material costs of the box structure. That material cost was estimated to be about $150,000. So Public Works staff has been dedicating time to research possible funding opportunities for this box structure. Through that research, we did discover that the Kansas Active Transportation Program through KDOT, they have funds set aside called the Kansas Active Transportation Enhancement Funds that they have agreed to use for this project to cover 100% of the funding of the pedestrian tunnel. So with this, staff is also continuing to research future grant funding opportunities for planning and design of the future trail. There are the bipartisan infrastructure law, there are some great programs through there that we could look at applying to in the future, so. The alternatives before you this morning are the Board of County Commissioners may approve the, approve including the pedestrian tunnel as part of the US Highway 83 relocation project, or the Board of County Commissioners may not approve, including the pedestrian- may not approve including the pedestrian tunnel as part of the U.S. Highway 83 relocation project, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions from Mackenzie? Hearing nothing from our commissioners, I will pipe in and say a couple of things. I was provided the Trail Feasibility Study of 2018. Is that one of the references that you make, Mackenzie?
That one is for a stretch of trail between the city of Holcomb and the city of Garden City along the river corridor. So that was not one that I referenced. I actually referenced the 2018 Finney County Comprehensive Plan. And Sam, if you could go, yeah, there you go. That, this is what I was referencing is this proposal.
Correct, and that red line in the middle of that presentation is for a bike trail across the new Highway 83 bridge that does have pedestrian and biking in it, correct?
Correct.
We don't have a trail down Sagebrush to the area where this box is to be constructed, correct?
Well, it would be down Burnside Drive, actually. It's not.
Did I say Sagebrush?
Yeah.
Wrong side.
Yeah, it would go down Burnside Drive. It's proposed to go down Burnside Drive across 83 and then down to connect to Southwind.
Three things that I want to talk about on this box. Number one is, is that you've identified a grant that Finney County taxpayers wouldn't pay anything for the construction of the box. However, they are going to be required to maintain it and pay the electricity that goes to it. And they're gonna have to provide to remove the rattlesnakes, the people that are gonna live underneath there, and the tumbleweeds, in that order. And it seems to me that the taxpayers are going to be hit with a much greater burden on a maintenance cost than the construction grant to provide access. The fourth thing that I didn't identify the four reasons is, is that I have not talked to a single resident in Southwind who wants more traffic in Southwind, certainly not on the backside of Southwind. Those landowners have built and constructed there for the isolation and privacy, and are not looking for a bike trail into the back of Southwind addition. For those reasons, I see nothing to be gained by building a box under a two-lane highway when we need four-lane highway to start with. Two is, I don't want the taxpayers to have to maintain the lights, electricity, the sheriff to have to deal with whoever's gonna reside there, and our maintenance department to clean out tumbleweeds every time it blows. And all you have to do is talk to somebody who's a resident of Sagebrush or Southwind to know that tumbleweeds are a big issue, and in my opinion, this box culvert will fill up completely solid with tumbleweeds every time they blow. And that new maintenance cost, this county doesn't need. Until majority of the people of the affected area being Southwind want additional traffic, including biking on the backside of Southwind, I will not be approving this. Any other commission comments to Mackenzie?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I obviously don't live at Southwind. I can't speak to the majority of the residents out there, but I've had a couple of residents of Southwind ask that we continue to consider putting this box under that highway. And I don't remember what year that would have been that a former commissioner and John Ellerman made a pitch to the state for some grant funding, and I don't remember even what they put in there in that proposal. And I apologize for catching you off guard. I should have let you know earlier. But I'd be interested to know what that, what was in that proposal, because there was a push at that time to connect Southwind by bike and pedestrian trail, not car traffic, but bike and pedestrians. So I also understand that there is that study that Kelly, and I think she must be sitting behind you somewhere. I can't, there she is. I thought she was gonna be in the room this morning, with regard to the Holcomb connectivity on a trail, and that really hasn't gone anywhere either. So I, I mean, I hope that we can put this decision off till the next meeting along with the other, and encourage people, if they are in favor or not in favor, that reach out to us, because I've only had a couple of people from Southwind say, you know, "Keep pushing for this." So that's where I am at this point.
What's your timeline, Mackenzie? When do you need to know?
I think the timeline is very similar to the rest of the KDOT project. They need to know whether they need to include it in the design or not.
That's correct. And I will say that we have the impression that this was desired, so the consultant is in the process of designing the box as we speak. That can't change. But I would like to also reiterate that with this grant, we opted to go with solar lighting, so electricity would not be a maintenance cost. It would simply just be the maintenance of, you know, keeping the structure clean.
I think what we need to do, though, is just like this other project on 83, let's wait until we have the full inputs from the public and the numbers. That'd be my motion, that we wait until the, do we need a motion on this, Mr. Chairman?
No, we don't need a motion. If we want to just table it, all three of the items on KDOT till the 19th, that's fine. It's gonna make it for a bigger agenda, but.
That's fine.
Mr. Administrator, do you have any recommendation?
No, just specifically, what are you wanting, what additional information are you wanting on this topic?
Well, for instance, on the maintenance, on the solar repair, who's going to pay the cost when the solar fixture that the state constructs, and construction fails? Is the county required to maintain the solar electrical device? And when they're vandalized, which they will, who's gonna pay that cost? I think we ought to know that before we make a decision, I guess.
And probably check with the sheriff and see what the possibilities are, the vagrants moving into the box.
Yeah, his words were very likely, just so the record's clear. What I want to do then, is there any other discussion from the commission with regard to the pedestrian tunnel? I would encourage the public that if they have concerns as to whether we should incur that cost, that they let their commissioners know. I would like to make a decision on this on the 19th, on all issues with regard to the 83 construction, to give both the state, Mr. Carlson, and the public a final decision.
And I think we have to, based on KDOT's timetable. Mr. Chairman?
Any other discussion on this today? All right, thank you very much, Mackenzie. We'll move on to our next item on the business agenda.
Thank you.
We thank the people from the state and Mr. Hall for participating today. Mr. Carlson, we'll keep you advised. Next item on our business.
Thank you.
Next on our business agenda is to hear from Mr. Wetmore, the co-director, to give an annual update with regard to Great Plains.
Good morning.
Morning, Bob.
And I'd like to say thank you to the chairman, the commissioners and staff. Thanks for having us this morning. This is gonna be fun. This should be easier than the last hour, hopefully, here. It's fun for us to say we're very proud of what's been going on with Great Plains Development and all the activity that we've had, or I'll recap the last year and a half, and know that our partnership with economic development has been absolutely outstanding. And as Lana and I discussed, we finally have a system down. Great Plains is staffed well, and we're doing good things in the region. The most active county, bar none, is Finney County right now, and I want you in your packet there to just look at what we do. As a reminder, we wear two hats. The municipal grant hat, we always wear, not so much for the larger metropolitan communities like this that don't qualify for Community Development Block grants, but occasionally we do USDA Rural Development, we do KDHNE projects. Holcomb, over the years, we've discussed a lot of projects with them. That's one hat that we wear. The other hat that we wear is the Small Business Loan Division, where we assist with all the different loan products that are available out there to assist banks. And know that banks are kind of our number one customer in that banks come first. We help with the County Revolving Loan Fund, the City Revolving Loan Fund, which we'll talk about in a minute, because there's changes there, but also with Great Plains' funds, with Network Kansas funds through economic development, and that giant 11-by-17 sheet, there's all the different products that are available, both grant and loan, that we'll assist with. If we don't know the answer to something, we can usually find an answer for you, even to the point of walking trails and tunnels and wildlife and parks grants. Yes, we actually help find some of those grants for you. If you go back to the summary sheet right behind the cover, very quickly, we have four active small business loans working with economic development right this moment. I mean, as we speak, we're working on four simultaneously. It's a great relationship, a great partnership. If economic development gets a lead, they let us know what's going on. They may work directly with a business plan with the applicant, and then they'll let us know right away, so we can kind of double team the project. If we get the project first, we go back to economic development. If the bank gets the project and comes to either of us directly, then we go back to each other and institute the process. We had 11 applications and nine loan awards from the date that you see on that attached sheet that has projects on there. We also look, always looked first for gap funding at the County Revolving Loan Fund. Over the years, low to moderate income requirements for that kind of made that difficult, Davis Bacon wage rates, public bidding. So as a result, we've not done a lot of those. Over the years, we did do a lot during COVID, which was really good. We rolled those loans out and, or the funds out and back during COVID. We had a lot of COVID loans that were made. There were also some forgiveness with those with grants. The news is, the Department of Commerce is out in the field taking those funds statewide and taking them back to Topeka. Those are good old-fashioned HUD funds from the 1980s and 90s that came out to the counties and cities, and then you became the people that oversaw the administration of those funds. You retained Great Plains to help with that administration, keep those loans, keep your portfolio going, return those funds back and get them back out again. That will come to an end. Interestingly enough, the state will be at Great Plains tomorrow and Wednesday, and we will be working with them. They're going back to the very beginning of the documentation, and thank goodness we save everything, because we have everything clear back to the beginning, and we'll be doing what they call closing out those funds. There were times in earlier years where they attempted to do that for Finney County, Ford County, Barton County, and the cities, the respective cities said, "No, don't do that," and they stopped doing that. But at this point, those funds have become pretty inactive over the years, so HUD is allowing them to take them back to the state. I did ask the question, "Do we still have access to a pool of funds in Topeka?" The answer is yes. So it's almost like they're here, but they're not here. So if we did have something that those would work for, we can go after those funds at the state level and bring them back here and use them for local revolving loan fund. Over the years, we've evolved those small business loans. The majority of everything that we're doing, I'd say 90% of what we're doing goes through economic development and Network Kansas. So you hear the E-Community Loan Fund, we helped Lana with those. You hear the new Grow Kansas Loan Fund, and I put that sheet in here, we assist with those. So anything kind of a dollar to $50,000 is E-Community, $50,000 to $100,000 is Grow Kansas, and then there's some variations in that Grow Kansas Fund. We can actually go up to $1 million in loan assistance. Banks come first, so we always work with those banks, and they, then we say, "What do you need? How do you need our help?" And that's how we come up with the combinations of different loan funds. Not to forget that Great Plains has three funds of its own in-house that we administrate and make available, so sometimes we can come in and assist if these other funds can't. And here in Garden City and Finney County, you have the Garden City Area Industrial Development Group. You may or may not remember, we have a private loan fund here locally, and Great Plains about a year and a half ago, I don't know whether we volunteered or recruited or we said, "Just do it," but they said, "Could you help us administrate that?" We have always helped them get loans, but now we're actually housing it for them, keeping track of everything for them, handling their meetings, so we've slid in to help with that. You have always been a tremendous partner. Thank you. The city has always assisted with volunteer dues for half of the dues. You have always, over the years, assisted us with half of our dues. They're totally voluntary. They're 29 cents per capita. They haven't changed in probably seven or eight years, so if you would consider that for another year, it'd be tremendous help to us. We, expenses-wise, we're, and thank you so much for allowing Commissioner Grease to be on our board, because he knows all the answers to all these things. He knows that we live on about $380,000 a year, and we try to piece together those funds. Over the years, those funds have been decreasing. That we've been receiving, memberships have held up, but the partner funds from people like the Department of Commerce, EDA, SBA, some of our partners, those have decreased over time. If you would consider that for another year, we would truly appreciate it. So enough for me, questions, thoughts, comments. You always know, if you're having a work session, you are more than welcome. You can have Fay Trent, who knows a lot more than I do about her side of the business. She's our executive co-director, but we can assist. Know that over the years, a lot of what we've had for state grants has changed significantly, so we don't have the ability to get as many municipal grants as we used to have, especially out in the county with people like Holcomb.
All right, thank you very much. And questions from the commission in just a moment? I do have a question for Commissioner Grease. Before the commission today is a Great Plains Development Agreement, Membership Agreement, at a cost to the county of $4,300. Do you recommend that we renew that membership?
Yes, I do. Like you pointed out, there's a lot of activity in Finney County. Over the years, I've watched their cash flow go to hell. Are these guys surviving? And it seems the busier they get, the better off cash flow works, and they're busy, and they've been able to add a person or two to the staff because of that. It's a benefit to Finney County, yes, and if there's a motion available, I would make that a motion to renew our dues at $4,350.
And authorize the chairman to sign?
That is correct.
Multiple seconds?
Give it to Dave.
Give it to Dave for the record. And before we take up a vote on that motion, does any other commissioners have any questions? And Bob, with regard to his annual report?
One question, Bob, and this is not to the motion, but you're there taking all the HUD funds back to Topeka. That always gives me pause when we send money back to Topeka, because it never comes this way.
Correct.
You know, everything flows east in Kansas.
100%. Just to bolster that a little bit, we've known over the years, I've actually traveled to Topeka with folks from here, with folks from Barton County, to say our piece and to let them know. They have a pool up there. That pool has stayed there. We've always had access to it. If we don't have it locally, we can still get it. It actually It actually sits there. Does this mean they'll use it just for loans? No. It could be rolled into CDBG grants. So know that HUD could allow them. That's where CDBG grants come from. HUD could let them roll that into the grant funds. We don't have an answer on that. That would be great, in a way, if they did, because we haven't really had access to a lot of these stale funds out there that haven't moved for decades. Good point.
Anything else for Great Plains Development, Inc.? We have a motion on the board, on the floor, and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll sign.
Mr. Chairman, I have the signature sheet.
Well, one is. All right, I'll sign them both. I'll give them to the clerk, and you can, good luck getting what you want.
She's got to fill in the blanks title. Thanks, Bob.
All right, next on our business agenda, we have a discussion from Dory Munyon, the chief county election officer, as well as our clerk, with regard to Terry Township. Madam clerk.
Good morning, commissioners. Dory Munyon, Finney County Clerk and Election Officer. We're asking you today to consider an appointment to the Office of Clerk for the Terry Township governing body. A vacancy in a township governing body requires that the Board of County Commissioners make an appointment. Commissioner Dave Jones did a little recruiting last week and determined that Tanya Bradley expressed a willingness to serve as the Terry Township Clerk. She is a resident and a qualified elector in Terry Township, and therefore eligible to take that position. Other members of the Terry Township governing body include Zeke Wampler as treasurer and Roxanne Lancing as trustee. Recently, the current township clerk moved out of the county, meaning that she is no longer eligible to serve, and that was the reason for the vacancy. Today, we're asking that you appoint Tanya Bradley to the Office of Terry Township Clerk for the unexpired term ending January 11, 2027. Alternately, you could table the appointment and direct us to reinitiate efforts to find additional interested and qualified individuals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Knowing the lack of population in that township, recruiting is somewhat in vain, so I'm going to offer a motion that we appoint Tanya to fill the unexpired term as Terry Township Clerk.
Right with the term ending January 11, 2027.
Correct.
And I would second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Bradley, you're appointed. Next on our business agenda is a break.
Good for you.
And we will reconvene at 10:00 after 10:00.
Is that because we go to the second page? Is that the break?
Page two, Paul Harvey.
Thank you all. We'll be back into order for the Board of County Commissioners. Next up on our business agenda is to hear from IMA, and then before that, I believe we'll hear from Kelly Munyon, and she will do the introductions and give a brief overview.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this morning, the board's being asked to consider approval of the 2025 health insurance renewal, so I'd like to correct the agenda item. I had 24 on there. As presented by Jayla over teams, Jayla's with IMA. Previous discussions and work sessions with IMA, all department directors and elected officials have resulted in the renewal that will be presented today. Jayla, good morning.
Great. Good morning.
Very well.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right.
I will share my screen.
I know you have the packet in front of you, Commissioners. Okay. Are you guys getting an echo from me?
A little bit.
We were getting it more from Kelly at the podium here just a little bit ago, not so much from you, Jayla.
Okay, how about now? Is the echo gone?
Yeah, that's better.
A little bit better, yeah.
Okay. All right. Here to present the renewal for 2025, as Kelly stated, this year, the renewal will be an overall increase of 8.99 percent. From a dollar standpoint, this would be 457,240 dollars. At the request of the county administration, we did look at several plan design options. These options included changes to office visit co-pays as well as pharmacy co-pays. After review of the options and how it affected expected and maximum claims, it was determined that we should renew the current plan design as is. There just wasn't enough change to justify any potential disruption to employees. The dental self-funded renewal was an overall decrease this year of 3.2 percent. The dollar amount is roughly around $5,350, and that should stay for 2025. The recommendation is to renew the dental plan design as is. In addition, the vision flex spending and app policies are under rate guarantees. In addition to the renewal, we do have a few programs. We are proposing adding to the benefits this year, and so we'll talk about those next.
Okay.
First being the revive wellness program. So this is something that the county has had in place in prior years, and we are looking to revive that along with incentives this year. I'll let Kelly speak a little bit more to what the wellness program will look like for this year.
So for this year, we wanted to reintroduce the wellness program slowly. So you'll see some wellness rates today being presented by Jayla. What we would like to do to be able to qualify for those is simply have the employee do annual biometric with either GrowWell Clinic or their provider, and any follow-ups that are required by their provider. In future years, we'd like to do some wellness challenges and things, but again, we want to slowly bring the wellness program back to the employees and just simply require the biometrics this year. GrowWell does come onsite annually. The last three years, we've had, of the 523 that have access to GrowWell and are on our plan, we've had 100 participants in the biometrics. Speaking with Marilyn Douglas, she identified some benefits of doing the annual health biometrics. Of course, the big one being identifying any health risks that you have, preventing and monitoring chronic disease, being able to make informed health decisions, improve your health metrics, and can keep employees accountable when they see those metrics getting better. So that's how we would like to initiate reintegrating the wellness program here for the county employees. The second and third things there, the TRIA Choose to Lose weight management program and the Employee Assistance Program, those are additional agenda items after this one, so we'll get into more detail once we get to those items on those two programs. So Jayla, I'll let you go into the IMA Pharmacy Advocate.
Yes. So one new program we are recommending this year is a voluntary program through our IMA Pharmacy team. What this voluntary program allows our team to do is to source high-costing medications internationally, directly from Canada at a lower cost. Where we are able to do the sourcing, we're finding about a 50 percent savings of these medications coming from Canada. Participating in the program makes the drug completely free to the member who's taking it, and it gets shipped directly to their home. And then on the backend of the plan, would have the benefit of that lower cost and the savings to the plan. Members would work directly with the IMA Pharmacy team to obtain their prescriptions, and I will show you the savings, potential, based on the analysis that we've done. So our team looked at 12 months of claims filed from June of last year to May of this year. We found that there were 83 members taking 23 eligible drugs to be sourced. As I mentioned, this program has account management services provided by IMA employees. And of those 23 drugs and 83 members, we typically see in a voluntary program participation of 60 to 40 percent. So we could see savings for the county anywhere between 356,000 all the way up to 534,000. If we have greater participation than that, then you can see the potential savings at 100 percent participation all the way up to 890,000. So some pretty substantial savings on pharmacy this year. This is a program we have put in place with other western Kansas counties just recently, and we are seeing success only in the first couple of months of this program being in place. Any questions on the pharmacy program?
How does the employee get involved?
So we would work directly with Kelly and the HR team. Our preferred method is we get a list of names only of those who are eligible. We tell Kelly to send a communication to them to say, you are eligible for a program, please answer the phone when the IMA representative calls, and that's how we work to get engagement. Any other questions?
I don't think so, Jayla.
Okay. Moving on then to the wellness contributions. So as Kelly mentioned, we are going to be putting a wellness contribution in place. What I'm showing you here right now is a non-wellness contribution. We built this by keeping the employee percentage the same. So I know there's a lot of information on this slide, but if you see here where the employee spend percentages, we maintain the same percentages for the presented 2025 as compared to 2024. And the, this increase, or keeping the percentages the same, means that the county and the employees are each taking on 99 percent of the cost of the increase. You can see here in this column, EE can trick change how that affects each employee's tier. So the $500 deductible would have the largest increase, 1143 on employee only, and then 58, 69 on family. Those on current option three would have the lowest increase, $1.31 on employee only, and 1392 on family. This is the continuation of a strategy we've planned place for contributions, wanting to maintain that same percentage spend over time. And then finally, we get the wellness contributions. So we have those new employee rates for 2025 here. We take the wellness incentive of $15 per month, and then for those that participate in the biometric screening, this would be what their premiums would be per month out of their paycheck. And down below, where we see the Vinnie County annual cost estimates, this is, this would be the financial impact to the county should 100 percent participate, 975, et cetera. Okay. Any questions on the contributions? Hearing that, I will keep going. So the 2025 dental contribution, the county pays 51 percent of the dental. So we have maintained that same 49 percent. In doing so, the employees and the county will split that decrease roughly around 2,600 in savings for the employees, 2,700 in savings for the county. And so with that, that brings us to our recommended renewal actions. So we are recommending that the board approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical and Dental Renewal Current Plan Designs as is. We recommend approving the addition of the IMA Pharmacy Advocate for future pharmacy savings. We'll skip the next two because those are separate agenda items. And then we ask that the board approve the final contribution illustration and wellness incentive shown, and then to approve the renewal of the dental plan and contribution vision and flex policies as is.
I think we're gonna hear the TRIA issue as well as the EAP services and make one motion on all of it.
Okay.
Is that all right with the administrator?
Did you hear that, Jayla?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. So TRIA Health is a current healthcare benefit provider that offers employees of the county chronic condition management services to employ, excuse me, improve employee health, reduce healthcare costs to the employer, and medication costs to the employee. TRIA pharmacists work directly with members and their physicians to ensure medications are safe, affordable, and effective. TRIA has presented Vinnie County with an additional benefit program called Choose to Lose that has been successful, and the board is being asked to consider allowing the addition of this program for the remainder of '24 with an implementation date of September 1 of 2024. And then the coaching would continue into '25, but the addition of the weight loss medication would be added to the program in '25 for anybody who needed it. Jayla, I'll let you go ahead and go in more to the program.
Yep. So how this program works is members have to have a certain BMI in order to be eligible for this program. TRIA has run an analysis based on current membership, and there are about 11 identified members for this program. A member would enroll online as long as they qualify. They would get access to a health coach and a pharmacist. They get access to an app. They would receive a Wi-Fi scale to be able to track their weight. All of that tracking goes back to the health coach, and the health coach will provide education, coaching, help them, you know, kind of jump over any barriers as they're going through the program. And as long as they are engaged, then they'll continue to work with that health coach at least once a month.
So the fiscal impact on this program, with discussions with administration, would be that the employee would pay that $65 monthly fee to be in the program. So if that is the board's desire for the employee to take that on rather than the county, there would be no additional cost to Vinnie County in 2024. The additional cost would come in when medication is added to those who may need it in 2025. If the county chose to pick up that $65 per month per member that's engaged in the program and the medication cost, there's an estimated cost of around $19,000. The agenda item shows an estimated spend of around $13,000, taking off that $65 monthly fee if that is put back on the employee. So that would be something for the board to decide there. Any questions on this program?
So the $13,000 is after the employee picks up 65?
65 monthly to be in the program.
So the employee has some skin in the game. We pick up, it costs us $13,000 in 2025?
Correct.
As well as the 400 and some thousand to the renewal on the plan?
Correct.
The renewal on the plan costs, Mr. Administrator, are those within the budget that you proposed from the Finance Committee?
Yes, they are.
And the room for $13,000, is that material to?
It can be absorbed within that budget.
Thank you. That was my question.
The overall cost, you said, Jayla, at the start was 8.3 increase?
Yes, on the medical renewal.
Yes, okay.
Okay. No questions then from the Commission. Let's go on to the EAP with Compass, please, Jayla and Kelly.
So the board's being asked to consider re-engagement with Compass Behavioral Health as our Employee Assistance Program. From 2012 to 2019, Vinnie County had a service agreement with Compass. In 2019, a new Wellness Navigator position and in-house wellness program at county health were implemented and effective January of 2020. At the request of the Wellness Navigator, Health Director, and HR Director at the time, the board approved moving away from Compass to Health Advocate. The in-house wellness program and navigator position have since been dissolved, and in 2023, EAP services were moved to Optum Wellbeing Solutions. At the time of moving to Optum, the number of mental health providers in our area was presented as favorable, and unfortunately, that was later found to be incorrect. Concerns and feedback from county employees have been received. A majority have expressed frustration with services, and mainly due to the preference being for in-person therapy visits. This is something that Optum will not accommodate. Usage with Optum has continued to be monitored and consistently shows minimal engagement. Our agreement with Optum ends December 31 of 2024. So earlier this year, with that information, I went ahead and contacted Lisa Southern about re-engaging with Compass. Lisa requested and reviewed the information about our EAP mental health usage. She heard the concerns, and we feel that this restored partnership will be beneficial and well-received by county employees and their dependents. The number of no-cost visits remains consistent between all the different EAP vendors. Vinnie County employees will continue to receive five therapy sessions per incident per year, no less than 30 minutes or no more than one hour at one visit. Our first responders today are also receiving five no-cost visits with Compass as an added benefit. This will stay in effect, so any first responders of the county will receive a total of 10 no-cost visits if needed. Lisa agreed to $2 per employee per month. Based off an average employee count, the estimated monthly spend would be about $592. As you can see there, that is just up slightly from what we are currently paying Optum. However, keep in mind that Optum is very, very underutilized. And then Health Advocate, just for your benefit, I did put the monthly spend with them. It was a pretty robust program at the time.
So if I'm understanding the math, to go with the Compass and the EAP and terminating with Optum has less than $2,000 effect?
Yes.
And easily within the absorbed proposed budget from Finance?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Kelly or IMA representatives with us today? Ms. Miller, you guys have anything?
The one, the one deal on back to the wellness, you know, option, if we get enough people signed up on the pharmacy program, it'll more than offset the cost of the wellness.
Yes, absolutely.
Kelly, is it your opinion as our Human Resource Director that the employees will be receptive to signing up to the pharmacy program?
I believe so, yes, with the proper education, and that's what I plan to make sure happens. Education and understanding of the whole thing.
All right. Any other questions for IMA, Kelly, or the Administrator reference budget? And is there a motion?
All for a motion.
It's gonna be a detailed one. If you go down the list on the recommendation of renewal actions, that would be appropriate.
Okay. Motion includes approving option one on the IMA. Back up here, and I can read it if we need to, but, and also to include in that motion the TRIA medication program, and finally included in that motion, Employee Assistance Program utilizing the Compass Behavioral Health. There are, I think there's some things to be ironed out on that, but to enter into the agreement with Compass.
Second?
All right. If I understand the motion, going right down the checklist of recommending the 2025 renewal with IMA, approving the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical and Dental Renewal with current plan design as is, approve the addition of the IMA Pharmacy Advocate program, approve the addition Choose to Lose program, current TRIA Health offering, with the additional attendant costs starting in 1-1 of '25, approve partnering with Compass for the EAP services and terminating Optum EAP services, and the county to pick up those costs starting 1-1 of '25, approve final distribution, illustration, and wellness incentives as demonstrated, and approve renewal of the dental plan and contribution vision and flex policies as is.
I have one thing to add. I would like the Choose to Lose program, just the coaching piece, it's no cost to the county, to be implemented, approved by you and implemented for September 1 of '24. The medication ad where the cost comes to the county would be 1-1 of '25.
That was in my motion. You just didn't hear it.
All right. The motion includes the Choose to Lose program effective September 1 for consultation second. Is that all right with you?
Yes.
All right. Very good. The motion as stated has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jayla.
Next, here on our business agenda from Mackenzie Phillips with regard to our awarding a contract and commitment of county funds for our roads.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So before you this morning, the board is asked to consider and approve the authority to award contract and commitment of county funds for the fiscal year 2024 High Risk Rural Road Project. So Vinnie County was awarded the fiscal year 2024 High Risk Rural Road Project, also references HRR in March of 2022. HRR is a federally funded program that allows federal funds to be used to pay 90 percent of the cost of construction and construction engineering for projects intended to improve the safety of rural roads. So for the 2024 High Risk Rural Road Project, it will include improvements along VFW Road from Maple Street to US Highway 50, and those improvements are And those improvements are centerline rumble strips, transverse rumble strips on Railroad Avenue approaching the intersection to VFW Road. Retro reflective pavement markings to the existing paved road, flashing beacon stop ahead and stop signs, which are solar-powered LED signs. One-foot aggregate shoulders and to also mark and remove hazards adjacent to the roadway. The Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, led the project on August 17th of 2024 and received one bid from Phillips Southern Electric Company Incorporated for $396,566. Kirk and Michael and Associates will perform the construction engineering, the CE, for the project. The CE is estimated to be $78,754. So the total estimated cost for the construction and the CE is $457,475. So the fiscal impact, the HRR grant program requires a 10% local match. So the county's fiscal responsibility for the 2024 HRR project will be $44,000 to be paid honor before September 5th of 2024, and this amount would come out of the Road and Bridge Fund.
Yeah, I have a problem with math.
Me too.
The contract is 457. If we're playing 10%, why isn't it $34,700?
So they rounded up, if you notice, on the, Sam, can you go down a couple pages, please? A couple more pages? And one more, yeah. So at the very bottom, it does say amount to bill county, and then it says rounded up to $44,000. And anything that is not, like if this ends up coming in under budget, anything of that, anything left in that $44,000 will return back to the county. So the alternatives before you this morning are to, the Board of County Commissioners may approve and sign the authority to award contract, accepting the bid from Phillips Southern Electric Company and approving the commitment of county funds in the amount of $44,000 to be paid out of the Road and Bridge Fund. Or the Board of County Commissioners may not approve to sign the authority award contract, which would also be denying the bid from Phillips Southern Electric Company and denying the commitment of county funds. And staff recommends alternative one.
Questions for me?
You know, one time, we've always had problems with that traffic on the end of Railroad into VFW. They run through that person's property all the time, it seems like. But also, we talked at one time about installing one of these type of stop signs on Third Street. Third Street.
Third Street.
And never, never got anything, never got off at dead zero.
Okay.
So I just wonder if you could maybe, while they're putting these types of signs up, maybe look at that one, too.
Okay.
The one at Third, didn't we need KDOT's approval? That was a holdup.
Maybe that was the holdup.
I think so.
Well, maybe we'll just throw that in the negotiations with them on 83.
That's up to Kirk and Michael to get that done for us.
Yeah.
Isn't that part of the contract?
No, I, this, I know we're muddying up the situation here, but I think that on Railroad Avenue needs to be addressed and as much as we can do, I guess.
Mr. Administrator, there's plenty of funds in the Road Maintenance Fund to cover the $44,000.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the authority to award contract, accepting the bid from Phillips Southern Electric Company and approving the commitment of county funds in the amount of $44,000 to be paid out of Road and Bridge.
All right, and who is authorized to sign?
That will be for all Commissioners to sign.
All Commissioners to sign.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the commitment of county funds and authority to award the contract as stated and as presented for the cost to the county of $44,000. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Post, motion carries. All of us will need to sign.
Thank you.
Madam County Counselor, before we take up the Western Kansas Corridor, you've asked for an executive session for consultation with counsel. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, I will not be participating in the executive session or the discussion with regard to the corridor. Vice Chairman Jones will be in charge of that meeting. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
For how long and who ought to be involved?
Okay, what do you need?
We probably need 15 minutes. We'll need the Administrator, the Assistant Administrator, and myself.
And four of the five county commissioners. I'll offer that motion. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Let's go. I'll be back here when you get back.
Return to regular order?
We are back in session.
All right, you're still in.
Second.
Second it, and you want to vote on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll take up the item on the last issue on the Western Kansas Corridor. And Mr. Pishney, you have a motion on?
Yes, with regard to Western Kansas Corridor, I would move that we authorize the vice chair and the appropriate staff to sign the acceptance of the infrastructure upon proof that the final payment has been made by developer to contractors and the subcontractors.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying, of course.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're done.
All right, well, we're back to our agenda, and that goes to the clerk for upcoming meetings and events. Please emphasize that voting ends, advanced voting ends in 55 minutes, and voting at regular polling places tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Did I miss anything on the election?
No, other than that, I just wanted to mention that we will be conducting the county canvas on August 19th at 8:30 a.m. That's your next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Any other additions to the meetings and events?
Up next, tomorrow night, are you going to have a posting?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question for you. Did you have any difficulty finding poll workers, or did you fill all the slots that you needed?
No, yeah, yeah, we filled all the slots. We didn't really have much difficulty. We had to search a little harder to find some bilingual poll workers, but we were able to, to find somebody. For November, we will be looking for a Burmese or Somali and someone to translate at a couple of our locations that have a larger population, just because it's been a struggle in years past, so we want to try to take care of that in November, if you know of anybody.
And Mike Utes might be able to help us with that with his connections in those communities.
Fantastic, I will reach out to him. I appreciate that, thank you.
I don't know if the, if the courts have, if the district court would have a list of those as well, that might be another resource to look at as well, as far as who they use locally for interpreters as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, next on our agenda is to hear from the treasurer on the idle funds report. I don't think your written report made it into our materials, so if you would, kind of give a view from 30,000 and anything else that we need to know about.
Absolutely, and good morning, commissioners. I'm Trista Joyce County Treasurer, so I do apologize for that not making it into your packet, so I'll give a brief overview of where our funds are. The treasurer is required by statute to provide a report of idle funds once a quarter to the Board of County Commissioners. So about half of the funds of the county are held in demand deposit accounts or accounts that are, have funds available for immediate withdrawal. The average of those, the average interest rate of return on those accounts is about, between 2.7 and 3%. About 80, 80% of those funds are held in an account that does yield about 2.7%. The remaining 20 yields about 3.75%. So those demand deposits accounts for the quarter did pay about $321,000 in interest. The rest of our investments are held, the rest of our funds are held in investments that are not available for withdrawal immediately, including CDs and miscellaneous instruments, including T-bills. So the average of those accounts is about a 5% yield of return. Those accounts paid about $187,000 this quarter, and that's just because, you know, traditional certificates of deposits don't necessarily compound as often as, as those demand deposit accounts. So all in all, we yielded about three, or $672,000 in interest this quarter, and those include the ones that did mature this quarter and those that are still outstanding this quarter. So year-to-date, we have collected about $1,300,000 in interest so far for the first half of the year.
Good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next up here, a development update from Mackenzie.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I have a few updates for you this morning. So we are working on reports for both Randall Estates and County, or Country Acres, to just give them an overview of everything that's left on the projects before we can accept the infrastructure. So we'll be getting those out to the developers. We also got updated aerials for both Randall Estates and Country Acres, so you'll be seeing those come in the future, or the next development update. Besides that, that's all I have for you this morning.
On Randall Acres, we accepted the design of the infrastructure, correct?
We, we approved the submitted infrastructure drawings.
So my question though is, we accepted the design?
Yes, they were approved, yeah, they were approved.
So the question is whether you have accepted that, as they are built?
Yes, they still have some things that they still have to complete before we can accept.
Timeline on getting that completed?
On getting the report completed, that's going to be.
Getting them to where they can sell lots and certificate of completion and ready to go.
Once we get the report to them, then it depends on when their contractor can get out there to fix a few of the things that we need done. So I don't have a timeline because I don't know when the contract, what the contractor's timeline will be.
Is that an error in construction, or is it an error in design?
This is just things that, like, this is mostly, so some of the things that do need to be fixed is from all of the rain events that we've had ever since the contractor first put in the infrastructure. It does need, there are some, like, wheel tracks through there that need to be brought back up. There's a lot of erosion in the ditches that need to be reestablished and probably putting down, like, some erosion matting to prevent that from happening until we get vegetation in those ditches. So those are the things that, like, the contractor will need to go back out there and fix a few of the items.
Okay, and what's the timeline on getting that done? I'm pressing for a commitment to a timeline.
And that, I, I don't think I can give you a timeline because I do not know when the contractor is going to be able to get out there. Now, we will be taking our engineer out this week to see if there's a possibility for us to be able to allow them to start getting building permits while these items are being accomplished, and that's going to also go in with this report that we're going to be giving to the developer.
Okay.
And I've been in constant contact with the developer about all of these things, and he is aware.
Right, and that's the best we can do?
At this point, yeah, that's what we can do, then it's up to the contractor on when he can get out there.
Questions for the commission? Anything else in the development update? All right, well, go on.
Okay, thank you.
Administrator's report?
We do have a sales tax meeting at 2:00 today. Part of that meeting will include the possible approval of the IT, the county's IT extension over there, which is just, just right at $40,000. If you recall, the county partnered with IDIOTAC to run fiber. We've got fiber actually across the street, so we would make a connection in that box, pull it over to the E3 facility, and then the cost associated with outfitting that, and that's, that'll be before the sales tax committee this afternoon for their, for their possible approval on that. I'll meet with CW this, this afternoon following that tax meeting. We'll talk over the E3 project to kind of give you a little bit of analysis on what's going on there. September 16th, we'd like to schedule a work session to review personnel policy with the commission. Think we've got everything ready to go, if that is possible on the 16th?
September 16th?
Correct.
Extend into the afternoon?
That, I'm not, I'm not certain yet, we'll.
If you think it's going to do extend in the afternoon, we ought to have lunch.
We'll do that, we will do that. Jenny and I, Jenny and I will be working on Sewer District 1 fee schedule. Recall, we need to, we'll, we are looking at that, it has not been adjusted for almost 20 years, if I remember correctly. So we'll address that after the budget hearings with the sewer district next, next meeting. Sewer project, it's not quite half-done at this point in time. I know that we have some lift station, new lift stations going out at South Winds. They'll run a bypass, as I indicated in an email, to, so that they'll minimize or eliminate any disruption in service. Asphalt projects complete, and I believe our chip and seal projects are complete. And I believe that is it for me. I'll be to your questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the administrator? I do have one on Wilderness Road. It's been a while since we've had any rain. Are we still maintaining that road every two weeks?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Well, that construction continues, and one of the things that the locals have decided is to build their own road through the riverbed.
Yes.
Around the baseball parks and into the parking lot. I don't really think that we need to have any formal action from the commission on that, but when I say the locals have done that, it does require four-wheel drive, because I would encourage people to use the regular public roads for their transportation needs. But if Wilderness Road is getting the maintenance that it needs, that would sure help the people in Sagebrush and Dust Retardant. I know it's expensive, but if that's in the consideration, especially if we can get some of those costs recouped from KDOT, that would be appreciated.
Yes, I believe we actually have a load of that Dust Retardant coming in in next week or two, if I remember correctly.
Well, as you know, I haven't counted the trucks that go through Wilderness, but it's an amazing number of trucks, and I, I assume most of them are local, but I would... Wow. Well, anyway, to our friends in Sagebrush, we'll get the Dust Retardant when received and get it on there and continue with the bi-weekly maintenance. Anything else for the administrator? Right, we will proceed to the county councillor's report, and we'll hear the report, and then we'll understand that you need an executive session.
That is correct. Really, I've been, last week I did have a board meeting for the County Counselors Association of Kansas. I'm on their board. We set our, or at least our planning items as far as the agenda for that meeting that coincides with the Kansas Association of Counties meeting in December. Worked through that last week. We had several development issues that came through last week as well as ongoing work on the Contract for Neighborhood and Development Services. Taken up a majority of my time. Have still continued to work through some tax sale issues, and hopefully, everything else has calmed down enough that I can get that filed in the next couple of weeks. We do need to have an executive session to talk about some attorney-client privilege matters regarding contact, contract negotiations. We will need the administrator, the assisted administrator, probably our development coordinator, Mackenzie Phillips, as well as myself and the board. It really depends on how long you guys want to talk about things, maybe 30 minutes, so.
All right, well, first we'll go with questions for the councillor, and then we'll take up the request for an executive session. Any questions for the council?
Quick one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a little bit more information on the tax sale? What, where are you in the number of things to sell that have not been settled and so on?
I don't have that current number with me. We did have an, it was last week that we had another one pay, which I'd kind of been waiting a little bit on that one. I have another one that's been assuring us that they, they have some movement in what they're going to do, but I don't believe that at this juncture with what we have that we can wait any longer to get this one taken care of because I'm not sure that that one's going to have any forward motion. So it has been reduced some as far as who's paid at this point, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me of exactly how many are left. But I believe I've finished the, the one property that had the determination of dissent attached to it from some time back that had gone back years. There were some additional research that had to been, be done in figuring out who exactly the rest of the owners are on that one because there have been some additional who have been deceased since that time and just trying to figure out exactly who I need to make sure to get service done on that one. But I think that we've finished our research on that one and should have a clearer path at this point.
Are you over or under 20 properties? Not asking for.
It, it's right about that is about the number we're at right now. Yeah, it, 20 is, is a good approximate for you.
Well, that's very good work on the taxpayers listening to how imminent the say of the tax foreclosure petition is. And for the viewing public, the tax sale does not occur until judgment actually is granted in that action. And that is a process that is due to all of the homeowners and to the taxpayers to get to that point. It doesn't occur overnight, and, and the councillor waved the magic arm. The court has its process with regard to foreclosure of a tax lien. All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege for a period of 15 minutes and to include the administrator, assistant administrator, the county councillor, and Mackenzie Phillips.
So moving to Chairman.
Before I second, I heard our councillor say we might need 30 minutes.
I don't think we do.
Okay, so.
We can always come back and extend it.
So are you going 15? You going 15 minutes?
Let's go 20.
Okay. For 20 minutes?
20 minutes.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 People included are noted. Please, Dory. To leave executive session and back to regular session.
Go move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will note that no formal action was taken. And the Commissioner's Chairman remark on our executive session is that we're going to leave continued NDS negotiation and finalization with the county counselor and the administrator and urge participation by the city attorney and city manager. Back to our agenda, Commissioner's reports will go left to right, age before beauty. Commissioner Jones, Davy.
Well, is it, am I old or am I beautiful?
Yes.
Both? Good answer. Madam Court.
Mr. Chairman, I have very little to report. I did attend the county commission forum that was held in this room with, with the county commission candidates present. And then the next night happened to watch on YouTube, whatever, the sheriff's forum. The only meeting I had was, and we've already taken action on it today, was the IMA health meeting. I can answer one question that came up in, in our presentation today. That, that room was full of department heads, and I think by and large they all were very pleased with, with what we adopted today. So, that's it.
Commissioner Driz.
The main meeting I went to was the convention visitors bureau meeting. Extended discussion, which is a whole new thing for me, was Airbnb rentals are subject to bed and breakfast tax. I did not know that, and it's kind of an issue on how to get this money.
How do you collect?
That's the issue. And it was quite a lengthy discussion on that issue. Fair was last week. I attended a couple of the events. I think it went off quite smoothly. I'm very proud of the Fair Board Committee. I did miss the LEC and EMS meetings in this last ten days ago. We seem to have a sprayer that threw one big major connection bit, so business before pleasure. And that was pretty much it, guys.
All right. Commissioner Pishney.
Oh, nothing really to add other than attended one of the forums, watched the other forum, set in place of Dwayne on that EMS health department meeting, and I think that's coming along to the point where we were, came to today. And just getting ready for some legislative things going forward. Each of you should have received, and I buried it here somewhere, the one from, was it KLPG or, or KCCA, Kansas County Commissioner's Association. You should have all received one that just gives some head up, heads up about legislative issues. So trying to follow some of that as well.
Commissioner Vice Chairman Jones.
Oh, numerous things. I also attended part of the fair. Went to the first part. The governors in charge, great job. Also went to the Food Bank ribbon cutting, which is interesting, quite silly. Also went to Tracy Mann's forum. Attended both the commission and the sheriff forums up here. Economic Lifelines had several Zoom calls on that so far. Also on the, the money voted by you guys, twenty-five hundred dollars to Economic Lifelines. KLPG, did they contact you?
Yes.
Well, also on twenty-five hundred dollars, they want to pay a thousand of that because it's in their budget. And I said, that's fine.
Very well.
All right. The exciting things that are going on at Compass is that they are standing at three hundred and five employees. We expect in August, on behalf of the board at Compass, to receive the CBHCC designation. Compass also had fifteen part-time workers this summer, including interns and others. Genesis Family Health here in Garden City had a reception along with, let me see if I can say this correctly, Common Spirit. The Kansas Osteopathic College is sending interns out for consultation and review in both of those health facilities, as well as Ulysses and Dodge. And the Kansas Osteopathic College had its dean out to address the gathering at Southwind, which was well-attended by the healthcare professionals here in our community. And it's an outstanding opportunity for us to have additional doctors and healthcare providers be available and get to see what we have to offer here in Garden City. The most pressing thing to bring to everyone's attention once again, to make sure that if you have not voted, to be voting tomorrow during the primary election season. Ten minutes to advance vote and all day from seven to seven tomorrow. And we'll await the decision of the voters with regard to those contested primary elections and then the formal election in November. Is there any other business before the commission at this time?
I'll offer the motion.
To adjourn, sir?
Adjourn.
And Mr. Driz.
Second.
Commissioner Driz seconds, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.